Right ahead. So I'll call the North Smithfield Youth Committee meeting of June 15, 2021 to order. Clark, please follow along. Present.
Here.
Here.
Mr. Jones is running late. He'll be in for a second. We have four present, one absent. We have four. Let's move to the Pledge of Allegiance.
I would like to make this through the flag. The United States of America, you the Republic of the States, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I have the honor of wishing the appreciation of retirement of Ms. Mary Disparido, who has been with us for 37 years. She, by all accounts, is a wonderful person, as well as an outstanding teacher. In her position was physical education. If she, Disparido, if you could come up to the microphone for a second?
Come on in.
So ready in the demonstration for our 13th championship. Mark, good night, you know.
Thank you. We're welcome. Thank you. I just want to thank you with all my heart and soul. It's been a blessing to work in North Smithfield. I grew up here. I graduated from here 1977. And I was lucky enough for the school committee, the greatest parents, kids, students, to support me and back me up and allow me to have the pleasure and the honor of teaching and working here. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you. Mary, Mary, I would just like to say a few words to you, too. I think it's an impossible task to try to say thank you for 37 years of dedicated service to this community. My daughter was probably in one of the first classes that we taught here, so that we go back a long way. And I don't think words can express the depth of the legacy that you leave behind. Your time, your effort, your commitment to this school system, not to mention the fun of rapper Dee. You have made a difference, and because of you, the children of North Smithfield are all winners. So we appreciate everything that you have done. Congratulations. Enjoy your retirement, and thank you.
Thank you. I just want to say something quickly. The, my endearing, permanent vision of you will be one of the days you came back to visit, and you're sauntering down the hallways with your aviator glasses, just looking badass. And there are kids lining the hall, cheering you, and it's just such a tremendous outpouring of love. Somebody who looked at that moment so tough is just the kindest, most gentle person, absolutely loved the kids, loved her colleagues, and is truly the best of North Smithfield. And you will definitely be missed, not just, not just by all of us, but by every kid that you've helped mentor and you've taken care of and you loved during your career. I know.
Thank you. Thank you. Unless there's objection, I'd like to go to new business Natalie O'Brien to speak about this year's We the People program and recognize student achievements. O'Brien? And Ms. O'Brien, before you start, if I may, congratulate you for Teacher of the Year in North Smithfield. And Rhode Island Civics Teacher of the Year statewide. Congratulations. Be lucky to have you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I am honored to follow Mary Disparido, who my daughter Paige O'Brien has had her for a number of years and truly looked up to her and always looked at her badly. So, so thank you, Ray. It takes a village. It takes all of us, and I'm honored to be here today. 2020 was a tough year, and, you know, a lot of people barely made it through, and I wanted my students to be here this evening because they didn't just make it through, right? They truly excelled. And, you know, this class and this program is never easy, and to do it this year, I think speaks testament, you know, to the community, you know, to the parents, to the students. It was just really an honor to teach them this year. Every teacher would, would say how, how hard it was, and, you know, maybe you'd have great days and really difficult days, and were you connecting to kids and helping them on every level? And when I was at my two We the People classes this year, and they would come in, you know, excited and eager, and they did their work, and, and they would share what they learned and ask questions, I was just reminded about what we do in this community and why educators work so hard, right? It's for students who appreciate and really want to put their all into it. And I felt that way this year. We weren't able to go to Washington, DC, but this year more than ever reminded me that, that's something kids look forward to and achieve, and it's wonderful, but that is not what the end is, right? Like, the beauty is creating a community of people who care about one another and listen to one another and want to better those around them and want to get their voice heard. And that's what perhaps made this year just so remarkable for me because it instilled my faith in, what I think is just so important in people, finding their voices, knowing who they are, believing in themselves, knowing what they think is truth or not truth, and being able to have that really important conversation with others. Like, it's hard to put yourself out there, and they always did. So they obviously did great, right? Excelled all year. They made us very proud at the national competition. It was hard. It was virtual. We had kids at home, kids in person, and we were able to have an in-person dress rehearsal, and it was super exciting. So we had individuals who came in to judge, who dedicated their time, and the, the students appreciate that. I appreciate it. And we are excited to go to Philadelphia next year, you know, not only with these students, but the students from last year, who I think deserve our appreciation and everything that they've earned. So just kind of in closing, before I, I, I call them up, the beauty of the We the People program is that studies show, right? It, it is based on studies that they are more likely to, to vote, to participate in politics, to be involved, to attend a meeting, not just like today, but to really move forward and be invested in more than themselves, which I think is so powerful. But the last two weeks, when we were doing our 28th Amendment final projects, which all freshmen do, and it's just a great authentic assessment, it was just neat to have kids just think and question, and I, myself would sit there and think, oh, what if we were, maybe this would make our country better? And all that we ask everybody in our schools every day is to take ownership of their learning and be curious, and these students have done that. So I wanted them to be here in person because I, I think, like so many students who have gone through this really tough year and have found a way to shine, and for every student, it might not be academically, it might be otherwise, but, but for, for these students, I have to say that the community, we are exceptionally proud of them. So I, I just wanted them to be here. I'm going to, I'm going to say every student's name, and I have a certificate for them. Just kind of hold your applause to the end because, you know, kind of short. And you can just kind of applaud them all afterwards. So when, when I bear in mind, if you could just come up, I have a certificate for you and a pen that I hope you will wear in pride that says, We the People. So you're always alumni, and these moments will stay with you and know that if you work hard, that you can achieve anything. And then I hope that that's a lesson that we all learn in life and that all of you have learned that, again. Okay, so I would just like to call up, and a lot of people are not here, but I just want their names to be on the record. I'm Sam Austin, Jasmine Kukuch, Adrian Zianzaloo, Marjorie Black, Jack Colvey, Curtis Carter.
Well done, Jen.
David Carter. Jacob Semenada, Carter Shardier, Adrian Dowey, Haley Foyle. Oh, no, you want to come back? Leo Labassi. And Olivia Labassi. Dolly Lenzan. This one makes me get that full of normal.
It is.
Heidi Sweeney. Julia Mandel, Matthew Martin, Oliver Noriega, Amy O'Neill, Eva O'Neill, Anne Pea, Thomas Power, Gracey Redd, Grace Fanning, EK Smith, Aunyan, Alvin, Derek, Dotson, Jacqueline Vincent, and Data Whitehouse. And Kate Stone. Not here, but thank you very much for this opportunity and opportunity.
So Brian, very impressive. Thank you very much. Unless there's objection, I'd like to go to new business item number two, Matt Tech to speak regarding athletic awards for states in finals for the school year 2019, 2020, and 2020, 2021. Mr. Tech.
Thank you. Good evening, and it's very exciting to be here in person and not have to go and listen through a computer and talk through a computer screen. I'm really excited, and I think that it's always nice to be able to talk about awards and appearances. It's always good to talk about those things. But, you know, I really want to acknowledge the fact that, you know, in the 2020 spring season, everything came to halt, and it was just gone. It was in the middle of, the 13th, a Friday, we just packed up, and that was it. And then no spring sports happened, and then we didn't get the chance to really celebrate and acknowledge those appearances in finals, and we did win a state championship in football. We did win a state championship in competitive cheerleading. So they missed all that pomp and circumstance that would go with it. They missed the raising of the banner to the wall and those celebrations in there. So I do appreciate the school committee taking the time to acknowledge their success in that. We did pass out a majority of those certifications already, acknowledging their success. But what I even want to talk about a little more before I get to sports is I do want to acknowledge Ms. O'Brien and the work that she did with the students as well, too, as a colleague, for 16-plus years. It's always impressive to see year after year after year, the impressive performance they put on with the We the People program. Not an easy program at all. Someone who can acknowledge the people that are in there, the ninth graders who have to balance their work schedule, their, their sport schedule, and still do the We the People and produce those results. It's amazing. It's fascinating to watch it every single year. Also, I would be remiss if I didn't take time to thank Mary Disparido personally. She's been with me my entire career. I have not had to spend a year without her. I'm not looking forward to next year spending it without her. So if you didn't get a chance at all, you should go by the middle school gymnasium. One of my proudest moments was being able to put a championship banner on the wall in honor of Mary Disparido. Her name hang in infamy over that banner. And I was trying to think of a way to summarize her to me and what she means to the community and the kids, and we only came up with one word, legendary. That's it. She's a legend. You, you don't go to North Smithfield and not know who Mary Disparido is, and that's just the way it is. And so I really want to personally thank you for the influence that you've had on me, my career, and I hope that I'll do you proud going forward. So thank you, Mary, very much. Thank you. This year, more importantly, I want to also thank the school committee for giving their blessing to run athletics. Not an easy decision, many difficult decisions in this year going into a pandemic year and learning how to teach and educate and that, but to run our extracurricular programs as well, too. Through your support, we've obviously persevered this year in running athletics, and to nobody's surprise, North Smithfield has done very well. We've done, done very, very well, and more of our teams have appeared in playoffs this year, and I'm proud to report that in the spring, every single one of our programs made the playoffs. Every single one of them is playing right now. Three of our teams have moved on to the semifinals already. Our girls across program is playing tonight, a chance to move on to the semifinals, putting four of our programs in position to be one game away from state championship appearance. So I might be back up here again, make sure I collect a little bit of certifications from you guys, but I just want to say it's more of a norm in North Smithfield to produce on the athletic field as well as in the classroom now, and we're matching our excellence in the classroom with our excellence on the field. Couldn't be more proud as an athletic director to say that, that it's more common to be in the playoffs than not, and that's a, a credit to the support that they get from the administration here, down to the coaches and down to the student athletes themselves. So it's a, a whole kind of community process to do that, but I couldn't be more proud of them, and so I wanted to thank you very much for your acknowledgement of them, make sure they are given those certifications as well, too. And I got to kind of duck out because we got a playoff game going on right now, so. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So let's move over to a, a public comment. Does anybody have any, from the public to say? Superintendent, are we, we able to take questions from Zoom?
Yep, we can.
Wow.
So if somebody would like to raise their hand or turn on their video, we can switch over to you.
And Madam Clark, for the record, Mr. Jones is here. Who is here?
I don't see anyone raising their hand or trying to flag me down on video.
Okay. And what about community comments? Does anybody have any community comments?
Mark Labassier just came alive.
Is there any way I could speak?
You can speak. Let me just get your, your face up there.
Uh-oh. Don't do that.
There you go. Your, your full screen. Go ahead.
I just wanted to, to say to Mary Disparido how much I love her. I, I don't have 16 years with her. I only have a solid 12, but Mary, you have been an amazing guiding force for me, and I love you and I will miss you, and that pretty much sums it up. So thank you for everything that you've done for the town. Thank you for everything that you've done for me, and I love you. Bye.
Thank you. Is there any other comments? Superintendent, do you see anyone?
I do not see anyone raising their hand or flailing about like Mark did.
Hearing none, let's move to the consent agenda. Does anybody have any questions about anything on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it.
Mr. Chair, I would be sending a thank you to the public. Would be sending a thank you to hearing the conference, hearing the guidance, tracking for the information.
Yes. Moving on to reports, superintendent?
This is the part where I prefer to keep the camera off me, but I am just going to go up to the podium. What I wanted to do was just, since this is our last official meeting of the year, the school year, I just wanted to give a series of thank yous. It's been a difficult year, and especially last night at the public hearing, Mr. Jones, you know, I think really summed up what this year was like, and I, I certainly can't top that. But I just want to give a thank you to our teachers. It was a difficult year of planning, of coming out of everyone's comfort, comfort zone. We livestreamed from every classroom, which is a feat that not many districts had attempted, and they planned, they worked, they did everything they could to keep our students engaged and to balance instruction and to meet every student at every level despite being at home, being full-time distance learning, hybrid distance learning, in some days, out other days, on quarantine. I mean, it was just a, an incredible year, but our teachers really pulled, pulled it together and did a truly remarkable job. I, I want to thank our principals, our administrators. The, you know, every day it was like rolling with the crazy in that something came up, okay, we've never had this happen before, how are we going to handle it? And they met it with confidence and calmness and, again, they, they did such a remarkable job of keeping morale, keeping their communities together, connecting with parents, working with the students. Again, just truly remarkable work. Our support staff, our custodians, who cleaned and disinfected and kept our schools and our rooms and our hallways and our public spaces safe. Many districts around the state hired additional custodial staff. Many districts brought in outside agencies to get this work done. Our folks did it with a lot of organization and hard work in-house without having to go outside of our own organization to get the job done. Our office administrators, the, our secretaries, our admin staff. The phone calls, the, the students coming down with problems and questions and, you know, trying to work with the parents, whether it's through email or phone, to, again, just to, to, to keep everybody calm, to give information. They were, in, in many ways, the heart and soul of, of, of the schools, kept it running smoothly, kept everybody in touch with each, with each other. Our nurses, oh my goodness, the nurses. They were the boots on the ground. They were our front lines. They were the captains in the field. You know, we, we defer to our nurses. They were, they are the public medical health professionals. They, they were so instrumental in keeping everyone safe, keeping the rates of COVID down, the, the contact tracing that had to happen all weekend through the evening. And again, just, just trying to calm parents and, and advise them on what they needed to do to do it safely, to do it well. And again, they, they were truly remarkable. Our families, our families exhibited tremendous amount of patience. Even those times where people weren't patient, we, we had some school committee meetings, and we had some outspoken people who were, were either moving with reopening either too fast or too slow, but the, in, in, in a lot of the emails I received, but the important thing is, even if somebody disagreed with how we were moving our pace, it was out of a sense of deep concern for the students. You know, so that was at the heart of every, every question we had, every discussion, sometimes debate. It was that advocacy, non-stop advocacy of getting our kids in school, keeping them safe, helping them learn, you know, getting them, getting them over some of the isolation that they're experiencing at home. So again, it was an entire community pulling together, all with the goal of, we're, we're doing the right thing for our students. Our kids, our students, oh my goodness. You know, despite bouncing between computer and classroom and hybrid and full, they kept to the protocols, they kept to the masking, they kept to the pods and the grouping, they kept to passing orderly in hallways. They were tremendously supportive of each other and their schools to allow us to open up as early as we did. And finally, I, I want to thank you guys, school committee, and, you know, you were real partners in this. You had many of your constituents come to you with questions or concerns, and you contacted us and, or provided solutions for us. I mean, we were able to navigate this strange, odd COVID world by connecting with each other and helping the community through this by communicating. So deeply, deeply appreciated. Again, this, this, everybody this year, I felt, just came together and really showed North Smithfield at its absolute best. I'm truly looking forward to, and hopefully, hoping we're coming out after the summer, and we're going to be into a more normal, possibly modified in some areas, instruction. We have great plans coming up and some, some wonderful things coming up for the students and to sort of try to compensate for what this past year and a half brought us. And so at that point, I'd like to just turn over to Claire Arnold, who can share some of the things that we have coming up. All right, thank you. All right, thank you.
So we do have some plans for the summer. And so what we've, what we've done and what we've been continually having conversations about where our students are and we know that there is learning loss. We know that there is engagement that we want to reengage our students. And so when we're looking forward, we're going to predominantly be planning for next school year. But we also wanted to offer some summer activities and opportunities to engage our students into, into school, back into school. And so this summer, we will be running some programs at NSCS and they will be a variety of academic-based programs. So it will be primarily English language arts and in math, but not necessarily come in for tutoring, but it will be book clubs and math enrichment activities for students to participate in. At the middle school, high school, our focus is on student engagement because we did find that through the data, through conversations with administrators and teachers, the community. I have a parent advisory group that I've met with, is that our, our focus for middle school and high school is really on the engagement of students and that social connectedness after COVID. And so we will be offering more enrichment activities at the high school and it could range from gardening to hiking. The elementary menu of offerings actually went out yesterday. The high school will be going out by the end of this week and it's just a variety of activities to reengage our students. We also have some partnerships happening, which I'm thrilled about. I reached out to folks at the town and they have been wonderful. Kate Pascarella at the town, Ray Pendergast, Renee, I can't remember her last name, from the North Smithfield library. But we've been having conversations about engaging our students at the library. The schools and North Smithfield library is partnering where we're creating backpacks. And so instead of a student just going in and taking a book out as they would in the library, they actually have themed backpacks. The themed backpacks have STEM, science, technology, engineering and math focus. And it could be some like an environmental type backpack or it could be learning how to code where a student would take the backpack, there's a little robot inside that directs them on how to code. There's other books that students could read about coding. There's activities for them to do. So there'll be about 30 backpacks available for the students all summer long for, for re-engagement activities. And we're also working with Camp Phoenix and we're in the process of having, we will have teachers available in the afternoon, afternoons on Camp Phoenix for students to cycle into academic enrichment. So they would have their typical camp activities, but students also could cycle into a story hour or literacy or math type activity during camp. So we definitely are working on our summer programs, but we're also planning for next year. And that's really when we think of supports and interventions, that's where it's going to come in. And we know that there are gaps that we'll have to make up and we're going to, and we're going to meet the students where they are and provide them what they need. We have applied for a grant for funding for clubs next year at the middle school, high school. I haven't got a pool yet, but I'm feeling pretty good about it. So I, almost 100% that it will go through. But it's for clubs at the high school. We'll be able to support 72 different clubs between the middle, middle school and high school next year. They run for five-week sessions. And in the past, when we've had, we've never had this many, but when in the past that we've had an opportunity, opportunity like this, our teachers 100% have stepped up and they've been really engaging clubs. And it could be the Dungeons and Dragons Club, or the Disc Golf Club, or the Archery Club, or the Chess Club, just a variety of book clubs. So I'm looking forward to working with teachers and establishing clubs for the students to get our middle school, high school students back engaged in, in, in learning. So I'm looking forward to next year and more plans will be coming forward. And so I'll definitely keep you in the loop.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's exciting.
I just wanted, had one question because I was in a meeting last week with the commissioner and it was other people, other people besides me. And one of the things the RIDE staff said was that they had found, their findings with this year, the biggest, when they did their assessments, was that the biggest deficits were actually not in the older grade, with the older kids, with the younger kids. And, you know, across the board in math. Is that what you're finding in those? Or do you have any sense of, is that what's going on? Because they were giving statewide statistics. Is that what we have in those Smithfield too, or are we?
So math definitely is, is, has been tricky and we will be getting more assessment data very soon. So I'll, and I'll report out on that when we have more accurate data. But we definitely find that math is going to be an area of emphasis. Right now, we're looking at math at the middle school as our area of emphasis. And as far as the elementary school, especially K1 and 2, is the literacy skills. They're just, it's incredibly important for students to be moving by grade three. And for our incoming second graders, they had a kindergarten where a year ended early, ended in, in March. And then their first grade year wasn't a typical school year. And so they're entering grade two. And so we're going to put extra supports 100% into our early literacy, especially our second grade students.
Just that RIDE had said too, that they were going to be doing a lot of, offering a lot of support for the summer work. So I'd just be curious to hear at some point, you know, how, if we're getting support from RIDE.
So they do have supports that are, are opportunities through the, it's not the advanced course, the all-course network where parents, our families could sign up for a course. And it used to just be something at the high school level, but now they have opportunities for students at all levels. And that actually in our enrichment summer program that we sent out to families, we also sent the link to the all-course network for the RIDE programs. So parents will have access to that link or already have access to that.
Thank you, Ms. Arnold.
Any further questions? We'll move on to item number four, informational personnel resignations, retirements, leave of absences and appointments. As we all know, the superintendent has authority to do this. Does anybody have any questions, concerns?
Comment. I'm so glad to see that we have such a robust statewide program. Full in person, in summer school. Yep, all, all in person.
Moving on to item number five, old business. The fiscal year 21 operating capital budgets. Is there anything in regards to 21 that you want to speak about?
I'd like to thank him, Ms. Donald, because they've made it much smoother for us by staying ahead of the curve.
Great. Thank you. Fiscal year 22 budget?
I'd just like to ask if we could schedule a meeting, the 30th of June is possible to just clean up for the end of the year and maybe approve next year's budget.
Six o'clock meeting. Does anybody have a, if you want to make it?
Chair, I'm not sure I'll be able to get off that night, but have the meeting and I'll do my best. We're probably in session that night. I'll probably be late. But I didn't, I'll make it if I can.
Would be virtual or?
Should be just a few minute meeting, right? Maybe we can do it virtual.
No, no, what I mean is you can still do it in person, but if I could do it virtually, I'd probably get it in a few minutes.
Superintendent, is that possible?
I don't know if the governor's order allows the mixing. It's either all virtual or a hybrid like this. I'm not too sure where school committee stands as far as coming in virtually.
No, I, I think it doesn't, I think it's any open meeting has been extended. So I don't know what the extension date is, but it's, should be, shouldn't end before the end of the month, so.
We could do it in person. We could do it virtually. We could do a hybrid like this.
It should be a five-minute meeting.
Do it however you want. Don't make a comment. I'll do my best with it.
I'm thinking for a five-minute meeting, it might be easier virtual.
Does that work?
It works everybody else on the one.
Yeah.
All right, so we'll do a six o'clock meeting on the 30th, virtual.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, and just for the record, on the 22 operating capital budgets, we did go before the town council last night and we testified at the public hearing about the fiscal year 22 operating capital budgets. We also spoke about the fiscal year 21 budget and what we, what, when I say we, I guess it's the superintendent, his staff has done to save money in the reasons why we would run a surplus in fiscal year 21 that would not be available in 22. I thought that we received a very positive response from the town council and I think that we should be in good shape moving forward. All right, we'll go to item number six, new business, three negotiations. NSTA contracts, September 1st, 2021 through August 31st, 2024, discussion vote or other action to be sent for ratification by the town council. Jones?
I'd like to make an announcement. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as the school committee may know, the, the subcommittee focused on the teachers' contract negotiations meeting over the last four months pretty regularly. The superintendent and the district team have been meeting even more regularly with the teachers, trying to find real strong common ground on which we can build contract we all agree on. And I'm happy to report that as of today, the teachers' union has approved the contracts for the next three years. So I think it is a fair contract. I think that the contract genuinely recognizes and rewards the, the teachers for the great work they've done and that they continue to do while at the same time holding dear our responsibility to the town to make sure that we are good financial stewards of, of, of our taxpayers' monies. So I am strongly recommending that we send this along to the town council and I will answer any questions anyone here on the committee has about the contract now.
So the contract was provided to us in the package. Anybody see anything that was concerning? Does anybody want to talk about it?
I feel very comfortable. If you're comfortable with it, feel that it's there and physical and flexible. That sounds great.
Anybody have any further questions or concerns? I did reserve the right to go to executive session if anybody would like to.
Final signature approval. Have they got any information on this or it's just coming up?
They have not. We, we generally pass it and then send it over to them. The teachers' union just approved it today, so.
Just, just for clarification, with the subcommittee, we've been negotiating in executive session, just for the interest of.
I understand.
We understand the, you need to prove it by the ultimate.
Comfortable margin.
Congratulations.
Mr. Jones was led, led the negotiations. I want to thank you very much. You know, as you, as everybody knows and teaches in negotiations, it gets tough sometimes. But Mr. Jones did a great job. You're welcome. All right, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to pass the NSTA contract from September 1st, 2021 through August 31st, 2024 and send it to ratification by the town council. Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconding. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
You have a party?
Aye.
Sam?
Aye.
Charlie?
Yes.
You found out?
Yes.
You're done?
Aye.
You have five ayes, no nays. Motion passes. Thank you. New business, item number four, discussion regarding future protocol procedures in excessive heat wave.
That is something actually that I had asked to be put on the agenda because I'm co-chair, along with Mr. Salvatore of the North Smithfield Health and Wellness Committee. And as such, I need to bring forward my concerns about the heat wave that we experienced last week. Five days of extreme temperatures greater than 90 degrees that had to have affected in some way not only the students and their ability to learn, but also the teachers and the staff who were not in air-conditioned rooms or offices. Almost a dozen schools in Massachusetts dismissed students early, calling it a heat-related half-day. And one town canceled altogether, along with several New Hampshire systems that did the same. But obviously, this presents its own set of problems, such as making up days, scrambling for childcare at the last minute and so forth. Granted, some people are affected by the heat more than others. Some rooms, especially in the upper levels of this building, because heat rises obviously, are, are more affected than others. And students still wearing masks at the elementary school must have been very uncomfortable. Whether one believes in climate change or not, summers are arriving earlier, they're getting hotter, they're lasting longer. They're going well into September and October. Mike did some research when I first mentioned this to him and thank you, I appreciate that. But it found that there were no heat-related policies for schools in Rhode Island. Connecticut is the same, but does post suggestions from the Department of Health on ways to help students and staff beat the heat, but they're just common sense procedures that I'm sure we're doing anyway. So I don't have an easy answer, especially since I know, thanks to Mr. Seethi, that air conditioning the upper floors of this building alone would cost $300,000. And I'm not looking for a policy or a protocol because I think that's unrealistic. But I'm wondering if there could be a common sense approach to heat waves that are predicted well in advance of their arrival, extreme temperatures that last longer than a day or two. And I'm just sharing my concerns because of the, from a health and wellness perspective, basically. And I'm hoping that it might generate some discussion or brainstorming or ideas, especially among the administrators, because they know their buildings so well. And that's it.
Thank you.
I just wanted to bring my concerns forward.
Absolutely valid concerns. And I should tell you, that last week. Now, we had the heat over Saturday, Sunday. Monday, we're still distance learning, so it was really Tuesday, Wednesday. And I can tell you, it, it, it had lasted longer than just the Tuesday and Wednesday. We may have done something. I was in communication with the superintendents within our consortium, Cumberland, Lincoln, Smithfield, Barville, to discuss plans. And we all agreed that because it was breaking on Wednesday, we were just going to just kind of get ourselves through Tuesday, Wednesday. And welcome to relief that came on Thursday. But as you said, there are a lot of common sense approaches that we can take. I mean, certainly a lot of breaks. I, I saw a lot of kids outside classrooms in the shade of the building, moving the classes outside. I saw a lot of kids at the, the water fountains and the bottle filling stations that we have throughout. Yes, we have looked into adding air conditioning to our buildings and it's prohibitively expensive. But the periods of intense heat are just going to increase. So, you know, it may get to the point where we have to consider that cost. Because as we go have very warm September and into October and then our June, May, Junes, you know, we may have to do something like that. I've also looked at these, these, these thermal filaments that go on the windows, especially here in this building. That side where the sun beats down and then the three floors over there that turn into, I, I think of it as a. over there that turn into, I, I think of it as an easy bake oven. You know, there, there may be things that we can do to sort of offset that amount of heat. But yes, I absolutely agree.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Chair? Any, yes?
I'm sorry, I just want to pop in.
Sure. Any further questions?
Sure, just, just a thought, I'd also like us to consider, or as the superintendent perhaps to consider, pursuing, you know, just things we could do outside. I'm not thinking, I can't think of what exactly there is, just, I've seen a lot of vents where they have, it's almost like a tent, but it's a very thin type of canvas, you know, and that, you know, it's light, I want to gather, and it blocks the sun, I don't know if that would be an option for the kids to go out and do some classes outside, who's going to, think that we could erect, think if we do, it's coming, we could erect these, not have them out there all the time, or erect them, maybe true, or they advance, if they, if they depend on how much sun they block out, right? Look at me, just something to consider, I've seen them out to get a lot of vents where they put them out for large crowds, and I don't know, I don't know what it is, I've seen it, but the canvas is very light, and it's, so, that, the outside, I get big outside like, or to enhance outside. Obviously, there we go, outside.
So, this, this mail, thank you, this is very, very timely, and I'm actually focusing on something similar in my business right now, because so many seniors are being affected by heat. And one thing that I think may help, not as a simple fix certainly, but just something to consider, would be maybe for next year, if we did consider putting, maybe, maybe it's some type of policy, or maybe it's just some collateral throughout the classroom, just to recognize the signs of things like heat stroke, sunstroke, dehydration, you know, what to look out for, so that, you know, instead of maybe a student just shrugging it off and saying, oh, fine, it's just hot, they, or teachers, or friends, or whoever, are really getting a grip on, hey, this is, this is getting kind of dangerous. And that might also help us, you know, plan out more, if we are in the middle of what's appearing to be a three, four-day heat wave, and on day two, we are recognizing that there's a pattern of students going to the nurse with actual symptoms of heat stroke, then maybe that gives us real, a real leg to stand on when it comes to closing school the next day, or switching to distance learning, if that's even an option for, I hate today, something like that. So, yes, that's just, I think education in this aspect.
Let's move on to item number five, discussion vote or other action on Right to Read Act, ongoing professional development through the 21, 22 school year not to exceed 105,000. Claire?
I don't know if you have any questions in your packet. I did include some information about the Right to Read Act, which was passed in July 2019. All teachers in Rhode Island have to have this training, and the amount of training varies by teacher, what, what grade you teach, what certification you have. So the least amount of training would be maybe a high school, or a language teacher would be about 10 hours of training. The most training would be an elementary special education teacher, who could need up to 100 hours of training. So it definitely varies, it is a heavy lift for districts, but keep in mind that it is, it's wonderful training, and it's great knowledge. And so I, you know, we have to balance that as, as we work through what this law is having us do. The training in your packet, I showed what programs that we're using, the Department of Ed showed us, gave us guidance of what programs we could choose from that did our, that would fit our needs and satisfy the law. And so our literacy team came together, we made up a district plan, and we're moving forward on it. It is very expensive to do this training. Our elementarys, or our special education teachers, K to 12, we trained in Orton-Gillingham program, which is, you know, an excellent program for the science of reading, but it is expensive. And so one of the, the great things about it is that as, as we move forward, we will be able to use some of our SRF funds. We just did receive information from the Department of Education that, that, that is an approvable program for SRF funds. And so it's tricky at this point, we just started, we have about, we have two cohorts of teachers right now being trained, one elementary cohort, one high school cohort is being trained this, this summer. And what I'm finding is that the training and the programs out there are booked, it's actually hard to get in them. And so one of the conversations I had with Mr. St. Jean, that I bring to you today, is that can I have an approved amount, this approved amount, that we wouldn't go over this, but as trainings come available, and if I can get teachers in, I want to be able to, to get them registered, registered as, as fast as possible, not to lose their slots. So that's what I came to, instead of slowly, small, small amounts, that it wouldn't exceed the bottom line, but that's what most likely the training would cost in total over a number of years.
Just out of curiosity, if it weren't for the SRF funds, would money have followed this mandate?
Not that I'm aware. Not that I'm aware, so.
I have a question. Great one. But is any chance that we could, I apologize, I didn't get a chance to, I mean, I know the problem, you know, issue, but can we get any teachers to, I mean, structures to do it here, in other words, that come to me, I think we could hire them out here, do the program more, slightly, that's just not bad.
So I'm looking into that, honestly, the, if we had, if we ran a cohort, for example, for the Orton-Gillingham, we could get 40 teachers trained in this program. The problem with that is, we can't have 40 teachers out of the classroom at the same time. And so I could possibly run a cohort where, and I'm working with other districts where maybe I run a cohort, and Smithfield runs a cohort, and Cumberland runs a cohort, and I sent 10 teachers during the Cumberland dates, and 10 teachers during the Smithfield dates, and 10, 10 North Smithfield teachers, so they're on different schedules, because we won't be able to have, have sub-coverage. And the, it's not a training that you could do, even if it was offered for, you know, five days a week for three weeks in the summer, that's not how it works. The training is throughout a year, that there's a practicum with it, you have to work with students, you have to report back, you know, on what you learned, and then how you had it in action, and then bring it back. So it happens over time. So the cohort that we have the elementary student, teachers in right now are already started in May, and they won't be finished until June 2022. So it's, it's, it's intense, it's wonderful, it's an incredible amount of knowledge about the science of reading. It will certainly help our, our students with dyslexia to have an entire, you know, every teacher that they encounter will have that training, but it is a heavy.
Discussion, so, is the 105,000 enough?
So it's definitely enough to get started. I don't want to say that that will cover it. I did, I, you know, my own quick analysis, I don't know if the rates are going to change or go up, because I think everyone's trying to get in them. If there's more virtual options, I think it could stay the same, that we could actually do a virtual option, somebody's running in New Jersey, and we have teachers participate in that. I don't know if it will unfold that way. And so I think that it should cover it, yes. And some of the options, actually, for the 10 hours, that will be, those will be RIDE modules, that will be free of charge. So for the, for a language teacher at the high school, that will cost nothing but time, and we will have common planning behind that, teachers will be able to use to satisfy those requirements. We certainly have to get it done one way or another, and so we're starting, two small cohorts right now, but it, but we will be jumping in.
Any further questions? Claire, thank you again. I want to see a motion to approve the Right to Read Act, ongoing professional development through 21, 22 school year not to exceed 105,000. Motion been made, is there a second?
Second.
Seconding. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Go to the final item, motion to, Valentina, motion to adjourn. Motion? Seconding?
Second.
Seconding. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it, we're adjourned.